Okay, we are on. Okay, I would like to call the joint meeting of the Select Board with the Reading Ice Arena Authority to order. Mark Doxer, Vice Chair of the Reading Select Board, filling in his chair for this evening. We have one member online, so we're gonna do a roll call just to make sure that we're all covered. So Chris, are you available? Oh, we have to get your sound working though. Chris, can you hear us?
Yep, sorry, I'm here.
Great. Karen?
Here.
And Mark here, so we have a quorum of the board. So, I think a couple of goals that I was thinking about for tonight's meeting, I think the first one is, let's go around the table and let everybody introduce themselves, roles as it relates to activities in the town for this evening. Why don't we start with that? And then, maybe I'll just give a quick overview above that. First of all, we appreciate folks coming in today to have this discussion. The Select Board, the Ice Arena, the RMLD, and Board of Commissioners probably should be talking on somewhat of a regular basis. And we do through liaisons only, and we haven't done so on a more broad way that I know of in, I'll call it a long time. I don't know if it's ever happened before. And what I am hoping, kind of personally in terms of goals, is to kind of start a dialogue, see if there are some areas kind of of mutual interest between all of us that relate to the town and how the town is running. And there are a lot of issues that touch the different groups right now in different ways. We were just chatting, and one of the ways is, there's discussion of looking at development in the whole Simons Way area. And clearly, you folks are butters and folks that are in there, so that's obviously a piece. There's discussion, we know that you're planning a new roof, and there's discussion about solar panels, or maybe an opportunity for that. So we want to kind of make sure that that's in the discussion before any decisions get made. And then, I think just generally to kind of, you know, see kind of who we are, how we work together. We all just renewed an agreement. Sorry, I just said we were gonna introduce everybody, now I'm talking. We just redid an agreement. I know, occupational hazard. You know, so that, you know, there's a lease agreement that's in place, and it essentially continues. The board formally recognizes it, but it's an agreement that was put in place to make sure that we're kind of working together. And it talks about representatives getting together at least once a year. Again, maybe that's, you know, a good excuse for us to kind of get together and talk. Let me stop with that. Could we kind of go around the table and introduce, and I don't know who you are, could I ask you to start?
Sure. My name's Kathleen Cottone. I've lived in Reading for 23 years, but I recently just moved to Middleton, about a year and a half ago. I have three children who all graduated from Reading Morgan High School. Two are, one just graduated from college, one's been out, and the last one just finished his freshman year. I participate on the Reading Ice Arena Authority as a figure skating representative. I am a Olympic level official with the US Figure Skating, up in the Vice President of the US Figure Skating Organization. I've served on the Olympic Committee. I've served with the Board of Trustees for the 2002 Olympic Winter Games in Salt Lake and in various capacities within US Figure Skating. I continued, I run different events around, in Lake Placid, New York, for example. I do three skating competitions a year up there. We run an international competition and invite people from around the world to come in. And I most recently was one of the team leaders for the Olympics in Beijing and spent a month in Beijing with Team USA.
My chair just went down about 12 inches.
And then I worked with my husband and their family business, and I'm an attorney by training, so.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Greg.
I did live in Salt Lake City during Olympics.
Oh, fabulous.
Yeah, but I'm not a figure skater.
Well, you can start, you can start.
I'll stick to downhill. Greg Fipps, the General Manager of Reading Municipal Light. And we're very proactive in terms of electrifying the whole territory in creative, aggressive ways. I'll stop there.
I'm willing to be a RMLD Commissioner, and I want to support all of Greg's projects. He has so many great ideas and a great team that, like him, prioritizes, triages, and gets done what they want to get done. So if you give them a challenge, like putting solar panels up, they'll, they'll figure it out.
They'll figure it out.
Karen Herrick, Reading Select Board, and I've been the liaison to the RMLD for five years. And I'm, you know, thankful every day we can deal with you all instead of National Grid. It's a good, it's a good place to be in. And so I'm very excited about the opportunity to take a look at this 30-year-old town of Reading asset and look at where we need, what we need to do to keep it going in the future strong and get the most value for our residents. And so, some of the items on the agenda tonight can kind of talk to, you know, what this asset has served us well. We're very grateful for it. We love it. And what, how are we gonna take care of it in the future?
So, I'm Jim Liston, Reading resident since 1986, and I had two kids. Coach, yeah, played soccer, and we coached soccer, Mark and I, together with my son and his sons. And then I was a youth hockey coach in Reading, for the Reading, I think it was the Squirts program, the Reading Youth Hockey Program, so. And I'm actually a part of a group that rents the ice and has been renting it for 30 years. And so I'm in there a lot and see the facility and see things that sometimes, you know, want to make comments on, need to be changed or updated or whatever. And that's about it. So I am the most newly-elected member of the Board of the Reading.
Congratulations.
Ice Arena Authority. Yeah, I just came in and haven't even been to a meeting yet, but this is my first meeting of any official for this enterprise, so.
Jim, you've got the gavel in front of you somehow.
I can hit my soul with that one.
Go, jump right in.
Yeah, so.
My name's Dennis Hughes. I was recently appointed the Reading Ice Authority President. I've been on the Board as an officer for roughly 10 years. 30-plus-year resident of Reading. Like Jim, I've coached Reading youth hockey, baseball, soccer for my kids for 10 to 12 years. I have a hockey background. I've played high school, college hockey for many years, refereed hockey for many years. I know a lot of the hockey inner circle people. Looking forward to working with you people.
Thanks. I kind of said who I was. I'm Mark Doxer. I'm the current Vice Chair of the Select Board. I like Karen, think that Reading, we need to think about all the assets of the town and how we can get different parties working together to really support them. And we have been talking with RMLD about many, many things, and thinking about how much of an asset RMLD is to the town. And we want to figure out how we can do other things related to, you know, electrification, supporting the community. I won't do the full commercial for the RMLD, but we have better rates, higher reliability, better service.
He is doing one.
In doing some things in town, which is great. But it's all, we're all part of the town of Reading. You know, trying to figure out how do we, you know, where are there opportunities we can do things? How can we be supportive of one another, and how can we get stuff done? So, I've been on the Board for, this is my fifth year, I guess, and then I was on the Finance Committee for nine years before that. So I've been pretty involved in kind of what's going on around town, literally where the money is getting spent. And appreciate the chance to sit down with you all tonight, so.
Carl McFadden, I'm the Selectman's liaison to the Burbank ring for six, seven years. And I don't know how to skate, so hockey's not really my forte, but business is, so we're here to, I know Greg and I spoke a couple weeks ago and, you know, we've made some progress hopefully, and hopefully we can figure out something, a game plan going forward tonight.
Yeah, I might add too, back in 2020, in the dark days, when we were amazingly getting things done, RMLD had done, was already thinking about community solar, larger solar installations in the service territory, and identified a number of properties in each of the towns and where it would be ideal to have a large solar installation. And RIAA came up, and at the time I told the previous General Manager, I'm like, this is great. It looks like a great spot. I just want to let you know there is an Ice Authority arena, so we need to coordinate with you all.
Thank you. Fidel Moltas, I'm the Town Manager. I've been to the arena probably four times now. I know that it's a huge asset to the community. It's available to high school students. I think I've got a good relationship with that as well. And Faduno, we call each other on a regular basis, yeah.
Chris, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, thanks, Mark. I'm Chris Haley. I'm a Reading resident of about 15 years now. I have two daughters, and I've been a member of the Select Board now for two years. And I should be at Town Hall in about 15 minutes, so.
Thanks, Chris. So now maybe we kind of, you know, come back. So I think that there were a lot of goals. The first goal, main goal was to get together and chat a little bit and meet. So I'm actually glad that we're able to kind of get around the horseshoe instead of another arrangement, so that's really good. I think we, I'll speak as myself and other Board members can chime in too, want to figure out how do we, how do we work together well to get stuff done? We appreciate the work that you folks do, and again, great asset of the town. We at the Select Board oftentimes hear of issues that individual residents want to bring up. So we're, you know, we get some stuff that typically gets passed through, as I'm sure you guys are hearing it as well, but sometimes we're hearing stuff as well. So we want to kind of figure out, again, people are looking to us, I know they're looking to you. How do we, how do we kind of work on that relationship? The agenda, as it was put together here, and I think Karen, you may have put a couple of the items onto here, so I don't want to kind of usurp. But I think a lot of it relates to, where are the pieces that we can work on together? Where are things that kind of, we figure out how do we help, you know, Reading assets? How do we do different things to be helpful? It's not taking power, giving power. It's figuring out how we're gonna work together. And we really haven't had a chance to do that. I mean, I don't want to disparage Carl at all, because, you know, he works very well as a liaison to the group. But the Boardman broadly, you know, we kind of haven't participated that much. And we're trying with all of our Boards and Committees, in fact, to do exactly that, is to let everybody come in and talk about, hey, here's what we're working on. Here's where we need help, for the Board to be able to go in the other direction also, and say, hey, here's what we're thinking about, and we need some help. Last night, we talked about one item that, there's no, we're just chatting about, and that is that we have, we bought property that, along Simons Way, that abuts where the leases for the Ice Arena, called the Zani property, bought that a couple of, three years ago. With the hope that we could turn that property into recreational space. We just did a big survey in terms of what residents would like to see. And part of what came out of that committee pretty quickly was, we should think more broadly than just the Zani property, but to kind of think about that whole area. What opportunities might there be? Are we precluding things by only looking at that spot? So, we went through with the Conservation Administrator, kind of figured out more broadly what that area looks like in terms of what the town owns. And then, we voted last night 5 to 0 to support that committee taking a broader view, and taking a look at what's there and what could be there, frankly. And to come back to the Board with different ideas. And the ideas are gonna range from recreational activities, potentially even a senior or community center. And frankly, who knows what? Could be public-private partnership, could be, you know, Town Hall. But that's kind of a working group to kind of figure that out and come back to the Board. You mentioned pickleball courts. That's one of the potential uses, one of the things that came up. There's no, nothing is done at this point. Basically, everything is starting. The town seems to have an appetite for pickleball, and some neighborhoods are less pleased with that currently. So, maybe or maybe not, we'll see. But that's kind of where that stands right now. I think the other, so a second thing on the list is thinking about the roof and potential of solar, and how we can all work and how, you know, it's great to see, you know, thanks for coming, Greg. So you've got the General Manager here in terms of indicating the level of interest in working on something here. You've got the Town Manager, and you've got three members in the Select Board. So we're here trying to figure out kind of what may be possible. But what I'd like to do-
I think we have additional liaisons. So we've designated Carl as a Select Board Representative on the Board, and the Select Board also has liaisons, so it is Carlo Barci and myself. So we'll have two liaisons because it seems like there's a, kind of some big opportunities, you know, elaborating what Mark talked about, which is the very early stages, but. And yes, so I'm hoping we can, so our lease agreement of 30 years says that we can have an annual meeting to talk about operations. So I try to stick to items, but I do have a number of questions. We just got the financials this afternoon for 2022. I understand a lot of accounting firms are running behind, and even the towns are running behind, so. But I did have a chance to go through them, and I was hoping to ask questions, because that would be directly related to operations. Did not get a capital plan, so I don't know if that means we need to develop one. But as far as we could cover some of these items, I don't want to keep you guys here too late, but we absolutely could have an additional follow-on meeting. I mean, the lease agreement says we should have one meeting, but I don't think we're gonna get everything to.
And just to chime in, maybe that not all the questions can be answered, and so.
Yeah, maybe.
I think that, you know, it's fine to kind of share the questions, ask that, you know, when possible, to get some answers for them, and then we can talk from there too.
Fire away.
Can I, just for a sec, so from RMLD point of view, anything else that I kind of, at high level, didn't talk about that?
If you only, I guess, two other things. There is the broader trend toward electrification. I haven't had a chance to go out to the site. The reason I mention the electrification is solar on the roof is, I've done some preliminary analysis, had some initial ideas. I can just share those with you a little bit later on. But the other thing that I wanted to mention, there is a drive toward electrification of the HVAC systems, and you also have a refrigeration system. So there might be some creative, Fidel and I had a chance to brainstorm on the new schools, some creative ideas, different business models in terms of providing heating and cooling and lighting as opposed to electricity. And so there might be a separate discussion later on to think about how you keep the ice cold and how you keep the building cool and warm upon the time of season, et cetera. So there's a, and we have incentives and rebates, et cetera. The state of Massachusetts has, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a mandate to electrify. There's targets in 2030, 2040, and 2050. And so, our goal is to figure out mechanisms within our service territory to help make that happen. And we might, this might be a pilot program of some, even besides solar, other out-of-the-box ideas, other ideas that are more out of the box, so to speak. So anyways, I just lay that for context, not for today, but we're literally, you know, back to the comments made earlier. We're thinking aggressively and not just thinking about how to get things done. So anyways, this might create an interesting microcosm to do some stuff that would be atypical, that could set up examples for other parts of the state.
And so when I hear the word pilot, sometimes I think of extra incentives. Is that possible?
Exactly. No, 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 sorry.
I don't think of that, but okay.
Wait, what do you think about that kind of pilot? No, but there is, there's been a tremendous amount that's happening at the state level and at the federal level relative to other sources of funds to make these things happen. That until recently, municipalities, and we are a municipal entity, that serves four towns. We did not have access to investment tax credits and production tax credits on energy systems, being two examples. So we are very aggressive. We, anyways, there's a whole bunch of stuff that we're doing relative to funding, so not pilot in terms of where I think you're going, but in terms of, in terms of creating other ways and other ideas to do things that are beneficial to the arena and the management of the arena, to make it more efficient, more effective, and more non-carbon. And this is not, our view in terms of non-carbon, we do not get into the political discussion. There's a mandate, there's a charge. And our goal, I'm a double E, I'm electrical engineer, the business focus focuses how do we get it done? So I just, I mentioned that for later. We can talk a little about this, but there's a much longer discussion. We won't get everything done tonight, at all. But the point being, we're out-of-the-box kind of thinkers.
Which is great to hear. I think I can speak for the Board, Dennis.
Sure.
Certainly chime in in terms of, the rink's always been in the forefront from having electric zamboni, like I think one of the first ones around.
Sweet.
For those things. And unfortunately, it's not a funeral tonight, otherwise you'd be able to be here. The Board's wide open. You know, we're very interested in doing that. We'd love to be able to do that. In the past, and your predecessor, I don't know if it's right, wrong, indifferent, the story we got was that the rink was not an ideal situation for solar panels. May have changed, because I know when you and I spoke a couple weeks ago, some of the economics have changed since then, which is fine. So we're wide open to that. Our only issue is that we have a peak time of, like, obviously the winter. We really don't want to be doing construction in the middle of the winter, nor do you. And, you know, I know Ed has already put off the renovation, I'm gonna call it renovation, of the roof to find out. I apologize. I know all the gentleman's names that he's been speaking with, one of your engineers.
Tom Melo.
And I know they've had conversations, and I know Greg, when you and I spoke, Parker seemed to be more in the forefront.
Yeah, there's gotta be a prioritization.
Which is fine.
There's a bunch of different buildings and projects, and, you know, it's not, this is not a 2023 capital budget. But to start now for 2024, 2025, you know, projects like this.
Yeah. So, so again.
There's a whole bunch of questions. The point being, we are way open, and we want within territory to.
Which is great, but we can't stop running the business. We gotta make sure, if the roof can wait an extra year, fine, but if it can't, I don't know. That's not my expertise.
And it's not clear, you may have to wait, but you don't want to.
Well, he said we wouldn't.
For the solar.
No, 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 for the solar.
Well, that's, I thought we were talking about it.
I wouldn't want you to get into an arrangement and be charging ahead and realizing, like, you didn't. When we're planning Parker, we're planning for solar, so that's all, that's all.
No, yeah, which is fine. I was referencing the solar installation.
Yeah.
Because I know the fire chief, when he and I spoke, you know, and I don't know, this is your world, not my world. Like he said, is there gonna be lithium batteries over there? I don't know, because if there's lithium batteries, he'd want it to be in a separate room.
That's a whole nother, that's a, that's a whole nother part of the equation.
Right, so I don't know if that's part of the equation or not. I'm just telling you what, I'm just dumping in terms of telling you what all the concerns were that were brought up to us. We're not experts on this, so we're very happy to have the conversation.
Yeah, and I think, again, we'll focus on the previous stuff, but, you know, the other things that come into the discussion, you put stuff on roofs, there's a whole structural discussion that we have to have as well. This, technically, this is a small roof, right? It's not big, but because of the Commonwealth's mandate to decarbonize and because of the changes literally in the past 18 months in terms of legislation and access to capital that we didn't have access to, we are, our strategy is very different now. It is put as much within territory generation as we possibly can. And we, so Reading and the rest of our territory, which is Wilmington, North Reading, and Linfield, it is, there's not a lot of open land. So we have to think very creatively in terms of how we generate within territory. Our charter is reliable, low-cost, non-carbon energy. Reliable being first and foremost. So there's a reason for us to want to put within territory generation in reliability, and then there's another reason to be low cost. And then, if you do renewable stuff, which is all we're gonna be doing, you check the last box, which is, which is not carbon. So there's a, there's a whole bunch of discussion, but, I mean, in prioritization and where it fits into the queue, et cetera. The key takeaway, which is counter to where things were with your predecessor, but the world she was working in was a little bit different, and so.
So I guess a quick summation from us, we're wide open to anything. We're not closed-minded or anything like that.
Awesome.
But we gotta, you know, run in the business and, you know, hopefully everything runs up and we maximize everything.
All right, so that's a great segue, and we have everyone in the room to be able to address that. And so, and I appreciate the financials today.
Karen, can I just interrupt you, back to Greg?
Yes, sir.
The person that Ed was dealing with, his name was Ryan Nguyen.
Oh, yeah, Ryan, yep.
And Ed had a number of questions regarding the roof, 7, 8 questions Ryan was able to answer.
Good, yeah, Ryan, Ryan was able to put together some of the preliminary analysis, just, I wanted to get order of magnitude, so Ryan is, yeah, he's great. So good, good. So he's the contact point. That makes it even easier for me to, anyways, good. We're not a huge, we're a small organization, so I know Ryan really well.
So going back to the first item on the agenda, revenue expenses, as would, I would expect, one of the biggest expenses you cover is utilities. So.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I apologize.
One of the largest expenses I would expect an arena has is utilities. So other arenas have already seen significant cost savings, so not that this can all be done in one fell swoop for sure. But this is definitely a key part of the longevity, and I don't know if it's really a business, it's a nonprofit, but you are. That's fine. I think you should, someone should have that attitude, because we depend on the revenue in the town, right? So, so utilities is your second biggest expense. Salaries and wages are your first expense. The, I'm glad to see, by the way, revenue's coming up again now that we're getting out of COVID. That's great. And, but what has been less than awesome is the amount of revenue that the rink has. but what has been less than awesome is the amount of revenue that the rink has been able to generate. I've been on a town meeting for over two decades and we used to see contributions of a hundred thousand dollars regularly and, you know, we, it is a business and we understand that things change yearly. But, and, and also we just had COVID for three years, so things all. It does vary widely. What I want to understand is, you know, going forward, I think we, for the benefit of all of the residents, I think it would be who of us to look at things that we can do to increase the amount of revenue that is coming back to the town. That's fourteen thousand dollars on an asset, four acres in a building or a multi-million dollar asset. I mean, we have plenty of, Carl has come up with it himself, suggesting that revenue, right now the revenue goes through a bucket, it just says, here's the revenue coming from the ice arena. You know, potentially that could feed senior programming, senior recreation program, other recreation program, that's great, but if it's only fourteen thousand dollars, that's not gonna feed a lot. So part of this discussion and, and providing options with a local partner with I know a thirty-room building as well, capital feeds into it as well, so what kind of, what kind of capital, aside from the roof, what other kind of capital investments are you gonna need coming down the road? And if it's H V A C, as, as Greg already mentioned, then there we go, you could see how this, what we call a net zero energy transition planning, really you can look at everything from toilets to, I don't know if you're already low flow, toilets to sinks to electricity, to water usage, to H V A C, and if you already have an electric Xamboni, awesome, you're already there.
Well, lighting is a big part of that too, and lighting is.
Is your lighting already LED or not?
I can't speak to that.
I didn't think it was, but it takes all different forms, so.
I don't, I don't remember.
I believe it's the latest up to, to code energy efficiency.
So we have embarked on a massive, that has been actually, Fidel, you can comment on this, that has been one of the easiest way that we've improved energy efficiency in the town was spending a million bucks on LED lights that we hadn't already done, so, and that certainly comes to the top of any kind of planning.
Karen, can I, for a sec, Greg, is this something that R M L D can help with in terms of an audit, or is there a partner that can help with an audit?
Oh, we definitely, yeah, so we could, so we have a, an energy audit program for commercial residential, there's no charge for commercial industrial, this will probably be a commercial building. We pay for the first half, if any of the measures are actually implemented, we pay for the second half, it's typically four hundred dollars roughly. We could figure something out, but yeah, we, we have, we definitely, we have an audit program, energy, energy audit program, energy audit, this building's, well, it's, it's different. I mean, every building is different.
Yeah, if, if I can just chime in. In, in reference with the, see, I like to look at it as the whole in terms of since the, the rink has been in place, cash on cash is like two point four million dollars. Fourteen thousand dollars obviously is coming up with COVID, things that we've had to do that don't actually get into the public, was we had to build a girls locker room. Uh, because that, we dealt with Title IX issues there. Most recently, Ed was, you know, there, if there's, for instance, a transgender child that wants to play, they gotta have accommodations. We haven't had, we haven't had to run into that as of yet, but Ed has already dealt with that, so if a child, a transgender child wants to play, it's already set for him, so we don't have, he's being very proactive. But again, coming off of COVID, honestly, I would be willing to bet that a lot of rinks are, were in the red big time. Stonem certainly was, and Wellington certainly was, so I'd rather look at it as that we have no debt, we have four hundred thousand dollars in a rainy day fund, and we put in two point four million back to the town for different odds, I mean, it's, it's pretty strong.
So it's been thirty years, and those are great, and we want to keep that going, and I.
So that's eighty thousand dollars a year.
I bet we can do it, um, okay, for the last ten years, our accountant analyzed it, it's, it's ranging about sixty-nine, so it's gone down, and I just wanna, what can we do to work together to make sure that, you know, we can, we can make sure that that's a strong revenue flow? And thank you for bringing up some of the, you know, the, maybe the D E I inclusivity issues that come up, because residents are bringing them to our attention as well
Sure.
and we're always making changes around town. So, you know, here's a question that I had on my list that you may not be able to answer, and I have a lot of financial questions, and maybe there's a better person, if somebody could sit down with me at a different time.
Yeah, but maybe, Greg.
But before, if I could finish, the capital and the lease agreement says that it started at three hundred, and it could be increased every year via the C P I dash U or C P U dash I.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so when I went online and did a calculator, I came up with a number that in today's dollars should be roughly six fifty, and what you guys have is three seventy-five. Which I guess you rounded to four hundred, so, so I just wanted to talk about that, I don't understand where that number came from, so that might be a number, and then again, and again, this is a discussion that the select board and the town manager and R M L, R M L D, we, if we can have a holistic discussion of your available revenues and respected capital outlays, you know, what can we do jointly to make sure we get to where we need to be?
From my understanding, the accounting firm tells us what it has to be, that's why they're auditing reported with the C P I index has to be tied to in terms of.
Yeah, so this calculator's online, if you type it in from thirty years ago, it comes up to a different number. Would you be, um.
As well, you can also remember in terms of, the town accountant has these, reviews these, so if she had a concern, I wish she would bring it to us.
No, no, this isn't concern, I was talking with her earlier today, she just got these, we just got these today.
You know what I'm saying, in, in terms of in the past years, we've never heard from her that there was any issues, so.
No, no, your accounts, your auditors sign off that it looks like it's all great, so it's not really that, but they're not ju, they're not, and I don't want to use the word judging. They're not assessing the performance, if you're looking at a business, they're not assessing the business performance, they're not assessing return on assets, and they don't know what our lease agreement says about what capital reserves you're allowed to have. But frankly, in this day and age, I know what your, I saw one roof quote, so I'm like, oh, you know, so if you guys bend on the roof, you're gonna be broke, right? So that's not a good place to be either.
Not, not broke, but then, that special fund would be depleted, just to be clear.
That's not how it's, how you do it currently.
That's another way to say it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's not a danger of not operating, it's saying that the capital fund would be expended.
Yes, correct, yep, fair enough.
The, the next payment to the town will be significantly increased.
Really?
Yes, I don't have the exact figures, but it's coming, uh, it doesn't really show.
Because of that, yeah, we're cold.
So.
Profits.
We have like a full year of revenue.
Revenue.
Right, right.
Profits are significantly higher.
But your fiscal year ended like June thirty, so, okay, so you know, so you know what your revenues are for this, so they're, good, so that's great. Um, all right, I would love, and maybe if, if you want me to sit down with Ed, or you want me to sit down with, or give your accounting person a call, I would love to go through this.
Sure.
And I can ask, I'm happy to ask our town accountant to sit in with me, that might actually be great.
Excellent.
Okay, so if you're okay with that, um, let me just, just as a question.
Just to understand, that was a question about the, what the reserve should be and calculating using the C P I index, you had a different number than anyone who's in there, okay.
And, but I had, I went through these and I had a number of questions, and, and it's, and for me, it's like educational, what, what drives your expenses? For instance, I had a question of you have this bucket of utilities, is that all electricity, how, we're, we're talking about water and sewer rates, so how does water, how much water and sewer do you guys use? Is water a big expense on the rink? I know, I know, but like maybe it lasts forever.
Depends on the recipe.
So, and I don't want to bother Fidel today, but clearly we can look up your water bill and tell you how, what category are you gonna fit in going forward?
Can I ask a question, does, does Joe Huggins spend any time?
No.
Would it, I mean, is that a possible help, because what Joe does for the town is literally, every time we go through the, the plans for what's going on, he goes by building, he knows exactly what's going on, also to the point of knowing when there's an issue that comes up that they can catch it really quickly. So they've done a lot of this stuff, I can't speak for, for Fidel, but, you know, if there was interest, I wonder if that would be a possibility too. Just to see what, you know, if there's value that he can bring. Yeah, so, so he manages the facilities department for the town and the schools, so he's very familiar with, with many different kinds of buildings, definitely not a nice arena, but many different kinds of buildings. And maybe could be helpful.
I'm, I'm sure, is the performance contracting over, or is it not, because if, if, I don't know if you're able to have them come down and look out for place, right?
So we just did the second round, right, of performance contracting, did we just engage?
I don't know if you're able to add it or not.
I don't know if we are, because you, they are, they do, they're responsible for operations, so.
Just worth checking.
And I have to get back to you on that one, okay, it's interesting.
So it's, it's the position, not the actual chair, as you can see.
There might be other alternatives to doing it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm just, but, I mean, Joe has been.
No, it's a good idea.
So involved in, 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 you know, things that, that came up and, and, you know, I know that we looked at buildings that were using just too high amounts of certain things, and it was like, and, and they were able to kind of dig in and figure it out, deal with it.
Well, I think this whole internet energy transition planning, like which would take, which would be a multi-year thing, then does get into some of the components that Joe is having, selling to us, those complicated controls that we're talking about and for the new school as well. And so those complicated lighting controls that we are worried about, everybody knowing how to use them, that's like, that is one of the key components in any kind of energy transition, and enables the
Yeah.
operators to manage remotely as well, which I know is already benefiting the town officials, so lighting controls.
Yeah, so I, I, I think the point is not saying you have to do A B C, that's not the issue, I think that if the town has, has resources, it can be helpful, it's leverage.
Yeah. And yeah, so I think we're open as well, we're open as well, we have climate, we have state mandate to be at N zero by twenty fifty, and everything you can do now will just keep more money in the hands of the Ice Arena Authority and ultimately trickle to the town, so there's no reason to wait for twenty thirty or twenty fifty.
So in, in reference with revenue, it's like we're not, I don't know if you can answer it or not. Would, like for instance, we discount the ice time for the high school teams. Should we not do those things, and so there's more revenue coming, I mean, these are like the type of questions, it's more of a, a philosophy.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Right.
Um, and I, I, you know, that's, I mean, you guys are always dealing with water rates and tax rates and stuff like that, I mean, if you make, I would say a recommendation, but, you know, if we can hear your thoughts, whether or not you think that we should be more aggressive in, in charging different organizations, you know. That, I mean, that's just, it, it's kind of like you put Peter to pay Paul, because, you know, the school budget's gonna go up, right? We charge more, but then it comes over to the town side, so it's kind of like, these are the top, top questions we're always balancing, and plus, in the back of our mind, we're always sitting there going, Nelson's looking down on us saying, make sure the black and red are taken care of, you know, that, that, that every kid can play hockey, and we're not dealing with, you know, that aspect of it.
So how many schools use Burbank as their home rink?
Just writing hockey, it's really.
Okay, this, and I know they have the North Shore skating club that takes up a lot of ice time and.
Yeah, Reading youth hockey.
Yes, at Stonem, they have four or five high schools plus figure skating, plus, so I'm wondering if there's time to take on a new school.
We.
To be a new customer, which you could still maybe extend the, the student discount to, but at least it would be.
Well. We, we have done that in the past until like North Reading, um, Wakefield, Settlemode.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen, I've seen different teams in there, different high schools playing.
Yeah, well, like.
In the past, oh, yeah.
Is that maybe just that hot?
Some of the towns now are merging, doing co-ops, like for instance, it's North Reading girls are with people, like, you know, from that aspect of it.
Yeah.
But one of the things that's very big about Reading, I'm not terribly familiar with the Reading hockey program, is that where most towns may only have a varsity team, Reading has J V, um, teams that are so big, it's almost like two teams, and hockey is played on Wednesdays and Saturdays. That's just kind of like a state thing where they always play, so if Reading's home, the girls are playing at six or eight, and the boys are playing at six or eight, there's really not a lot of time for them to be able to play, because they have to play on Wednesdays and Sundays.
So there are four or five highs at Reading High, because there's girls varsity, boys varsity, girls J V, and two boys J V?
No. The team is so big, it's like the equivalent of two teams, they, they play a lot of teams.
So it's like five high school teams, high school.
Yeah, there, there's no J V girls, and it, it's in, it's in the process of it, can you expand it?
Oh, okay.
I mean, I think, I, I mean, I know Stonem doesn't have, they don't have a skating club that works out of there, North Shore is like the main skating club that's, and they just have, Lou just has some ice that he has like two o'clock on a couple afternoons where he doesn't.
Right, they're not a club.
So they're not a club, so they don't take as much, like North Shore takes a lot of ice. He also uses Catholic schools and other schools and other, so he can farm out, but I, I mean, given that there's just one, one rink, like North Shore takes up like a lot of ice, and then Reading youth hockey, which is all of our whole town, really takes up the most, it's the youth hockey program that takes up, it probably serves most of a lot of the community, so then you'd be taking it away from Reading residents to give it to, like, I don't, you, you couldn't really probably put the surrounding towns, because they're all compete, they're all gonna be having their games on Wednesdays and Saturdays too. And you're already going, like, I mean, my, both my kids are all, all, you know, two of my three play hockey in Reading, my daughter and my son, so we went from one to that. So you're spending basically all evening there on Wednesday and or Saturday, so there's no, like, I don't know where they'd fit it in, that would be my only, some scheduling perspective.
One thing that would be helpful.
It's an idea of us.
Yeah.
So one thing would be helpful is, it was great to meet some of the board members and directors tonight, because it's not published anywhere, and I'm getting questions and concerns from residents. We should be publishing board members and contact information, I shouldn't have to go to the state website to be able to reach out to one of you folks. But it would be hap, happy to Kathy's point, I was able to pull down North Shore skating club hours, but there's no one central place that really shows how, what's the utilization of the ice, and what's an appropriate utilization, is it eighty percent of ice time, and there's a time you assume it's downtime? So I would, and I have other residents asking for more access, so it would be great to really see in a chart how it's scheduled, and there's no reason that can't be public.
Sure, just one additional thing, just to follow up in reference for Stonem. Stonem's youth program versus Reading's youth program are, is apples and oranges, in terms of this four hundred plus kids playing in Reading hockey, Stonem maybe half of that.
Right.
So, it, it's like, so in youth hockey, they actually split the ice, and they play no home games.
Yeah, so it's a smaller town, yeah. And in that.
Because they just don't have any, we don't have enough time for them, it's just practice only during the week, you know.
And Ed has mostly hours allocated from September through April, so there really is no downtime.
So they could share that with us?
Yeah, you have an overall calendar that shows, you know, stick practice, Reading high schools, North Shore skating, something like that, yeah.
I would like to, I would like to see it, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I see a lot of publications and there's some stuff, but there's, you can't, you'll, yeah, you only get a fraction, I'd really love to see how it is booked.
There might be some, yeah, I'm sure.
I think it shifts depending on your season, if you know you're basically gonna start from end of August through
Fair enough.
April, probably, I mean, hockey's, high school hockey's gonna end, end of February, going into playoffs, then you're gonna have the Valley League that's gonna go through mid-April, but then that's when figure skating picks up, and I know they use a lot of ice in the summer, I mean, they, they are probably, they start to get take over more, and certainly they have summer skating programs, and I don't know if he's doing hockey camps, I've seen a few things, but basically I feel like North Shore kind of picks up and grabs a lot more ice.
And I know he tries targeting at least an hour or a half of corn coat open skate for, for kids to be, you know, ready, like, once come down, just free skate. So that's kind of like the twelve to one thirty, like lunchtime, where people are trying to get out and get some.
Karen, the schedule is published online, there was a schedule of hours for public skating.
Yes, it's public, it does have public in secret. I'd really like to see, yeah, I'd like to see all that.
You've got it all in one place, yeah, one place, yeah.
I think, I don't think there's any reason that that needs to be a secret. I would really love to see that, and it doesn't have, if you don't, if it's too much to maintain on the web, then I, I would love to just see, you know, what, uh, printouts from whatever Ed uses to schedule it, I'm sure he's got it all under control.
I think a weekly thing would be tough, but if like a, a month at a time, you know, like the first month it just puts on there, that's, that could be.
Yeah, yeah, perfectly. Yeah, it would just be interesting to see, especially when residents are asking me, I can show them, wow, it is booked, and at this time of year, it's booked, and
It's a lot of just copy, you know. Yeah.
So, um, I mean, I, so, um, I've known Ed for a long time, I've been skating at the rink for a long time, and I used to volunteer for special skate, which I don't know if that runs anymore, but, um, the first biggest expense is really salaries, and so it's, it weighs heavily on, on your business that you're running the, the salaries, and I didn't know if you wanted to talk to them at all.
It strikes me that we're a private corporation, really, wouldn't want to be discussing people's salaries in a public forum, and, and, you know, the employees.
It is public, no, we don't have to get into numbers, it's public, it's not happening in front of me.
But I know it's on there, but, you know, you, you want to ask us why people are paid certain amounts, and, you know, what this, why we need staffing and the like, that's my concern, but we can,
All right.
but if, we can certainly, if, what I was gonna say earlier is maybe if you could tell us these, what these questions are, we can get back to you with specific written answers as to why we, you know, why things are done. I'm just concerned of getting into some of the revenue and expense issues in a, in a public setting with, where it's a private business and involves people's salaries.
Yeah, so it's a non, it's a nonprofit, and it is a town asset for the benefit of the town of Reading, and I will just share with you, because we just did this, two paying classification studies, we aim to pay within the seventy-five percent.
How do you pronounce?
Seventy-five, seventy-five percentile, seventh bracket, that's where we target all of our employees. So obviously we need to be competitive, we want the best people, but, you know, we're trying to balance things, that's where we are, so that, that might be helpful.
What do you mean by you're paying in the seventy-five percent?
We don't pay hundred percent of.
Superior of towns, like-minded towns.
Well, I'll, yes, think of the maximum salary. Think of the maximum salary anybody could get for a particular, um, salary. And if you're paying only fifty percent, you're losing people. If you're paying a hundred percent, you know, if you can pay a hundred percent, great, but Reading doesn't want to be at the top and, and that's for teachers and fire and school teachers and even Mr. Walton. So, um, so, um, I, I understand that the Stonem Arena manager makes eighty thousand dollars and I assume there's benefits on top of that. So I'm, I'm getting questions from residents. And, and some of this is around transparency, but clearly anything that gets filed publicly, you know, people can't go and find it.
And certainly, this is certainly meant to be argued in a way like that, but if you ever went down there and saw what Ed does in terms of, where you may see a line item where, and I, cause you referenced Stonem, I'll reference Stonem, is when there's the amony breaks down, the higher mechanic to come in and they pay the guy two thousand dollars, Ed fixes it. He does probably three people, I mean, he's, he works a hundred hours probably there all the time, he's always doing things. So, um, you know, it, it's just apples and oranges and, um, you know, Reading is not a commercialized building internals versus like Stonem will, they'll put, you know, A B C incorporated on the boards and stuff like that. We, we don't do those things, um, because we feel like it kind of takes away from the town field. I don't know, maybe that's how we look at, you know, for additional revenue, you know, do we have Joe's Hardware Store on the boards, you know, and we charge them for advertising and stuff like that, that's Stonem, that's, that's, this is, it, it, you know, this is a community
Yeah, 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 both ways, both ways, yeah. Yep.
rink and we're just, you know, you guys are the leaders of, of the community and if your philosophy is, you know, raise your rates, get advertising, maximize every single dollar, you know, we'll take it to the board and see what more comes.
In fact, I think step one is to kind of better understand your philosophies and, and how you, you're seeing it, how it's been run. And helping us to understand that kind of takes us down the road a long ways first. And I know that we're here to say, you know, raise the high school.
Yes, exactly.
I think that frankly, I doubt that that would be something that the group would be in favor of. But to kind of understand how it's working, um, I think we have a responsibility to the town and to the, to the residents just kind of saying, hey, we're, we're doing everything we can, we're looking wherever we can. We've been incredibly successful lately raising grant funds as an example. And I don't know if there's an opportunity for that here also for different kinds of things. And I'm sure there is as it relates to, to electric, but there may be for other things also. And figuring out again, how do we do that? At the end of the day, you know, we're, we're all together trying to figure out how do we do this? It's, it's as simple as that. And, and you know, Karen has some, some questions, I think that, um, it's great, first of all, that we're all here in the room talking about it. I think that's the starting point and able to do it. And, and again, I think it's probably better, you know, you've got some of the, the ones that I think, you know, kind of need to lead the charge and others, it's a discussion to take place. Um, and as Jim suggested, kind of, you know, come back on, on some of these things will be really helpful. And then to get together again, if that's the right thing or, or however, I think that would be great. It's, it's meant to be, how, you know, how do we, how do we get this done? How can we be helpful to you folks when I'm completely having you say, you know, please go away?
In fact, Karen, I just have a quick question. You mentioned, um, some people in town are complaining about the ability to go to the public skating.
They're asking for more access.
This is my own. Yeah, yeah, so what, is that, cause they have three, at least usually three separate days of that set aside. Is it the timing of it, is it the wrong time?
They have sex.
Is, um, is it just not the right time for those people or is it, I'm just trying to figure out what, cause.
For our folks who work nine to five, um, it's, they can't get to it during the week and that would be one concern, um.
Yeah, so they need in the evening. True. Okay.
Other issues that have been raised are as the climate's getting warmer, we used to have lots, we used to have lots of outdoor ice skating rinks here. I think that we had two days of outdoor ice skating this year. So the resident was like, should we be talking about whether, whether the rink really becomes part of a cooling center plan or can we provide more access if, um, during, even during the winter, there's no, if it's too warm for ice to freeze outside? How, what kind of, well, well, maybe the committee could talk about a second rink.
Right, there you go, exactly, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't, you were saying, you were saying that the outdoor, like Sturgis, Memorial Park, or two of those.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of outdoor ice this year.
They never, they never freezes in a morning.
Wasn't it, wasn't it because the kids trashed Sturgis Park and the, and the, there was an issue at Sturgis Park where the kids did something so the town pulled the plug and differently, they didn't reuse the rink.
Um, yeah, that may have been part of it. And in general, this was also a warm winter and there weren't very many days when the ice skating was actually frozen. I mean, and this, we'd like to say, oh, that's never gonna happen again, but I don't think we can assume that, so.
So Chris had a comment.
Yeah, no, um, I just, I'm, I'm under still the same philosophy that I own my own business. I bought my own unit in my building. I have a condo association that some I have to answer to whether or not I can change my, uh, you know, door lock on the outside. But I'm under the mindset that the Reading Ice Authority is their own business, they can do whatever they want. If they want to go ahead and pay Chris Haley to be their new general manager for three hundred grand a year, they can do it. And if they screw other people in the process, they can no longer work there because now my inflated salary, um, you know, that's what happens. I, I think that any city or town around here would kill to be in Reading's position right now. And for me, seeing the numbers, whether it's fourteen thousand, a hundred thousand dollars coming in for revenue to the town, that is meaningless. Any city or town would kill to have this rink and, uh, and they would pay whatever they could to get it. We already have it, we have to maintain it, I understand. Going with the, the solar idea, I completely agree. If we can go ahead and, and get solar over there, if it makes financial sense to them, they're gonna do it. If it doesn't, they're not going to. I mean, it's as simple as that. I wanted to get solar from my own home. I looked into it, ran all the numbers, everything worked out great. And then right at the end, I was gonna get the, the, um, the rebate amount that I was supposed to get. So it wasn't gonna be financially worth it and I didn't do it. And I was like eighteen months into the whole process. So just for me, I, I think that, um, seeing Ed, if you just even look, um, I don't know him, I've met him like two, three times, that's pretty much it. But the amount of time that he spends posting on, on Facebook, all the activities that are happening and the skate, like you said, open skate, that's all I see every day is all the skate times on different pictures that he's doing for it and everything. Carl mentioned he works a hundred hours. Judging by just seeing what he's doing on social media alone, it seems as if he works a hundred hours. It's like Fidel working at the, at the ice rink at this point. I just, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm leery to be rocking the boat for the Reading Ice Authority. I'm not saying that what we're doing is, but I, I just think that it's better to have them than to not. And if anything, that we can continue to foster that for the next twenty, thirty years, whatever it ends up being, it makes sense. The, the climate mandate by twenty fifty is also for the state. It's not for the Reading Ice Authority, it's not for, for, you know, uh, your house. I mean, it'd be great to, to hit that goal and see what happens.
So, I mean, I, just a quick summation, absolute one hundred percent, solar panels, energy consum- I mean, we want to make as much money, I mean, for the town of Reading, I mean, that's how it was. The other exciting thing, and Fidel can jump in, is like pickleball's an issue, right? For neighbors and everything like that. Yesterday, Jim Sullivan, the new rep director, Fidel and myself, we went, uh, we had a thought where, as you know, behind the ice rink, there's a dirt park a lot, pretty much. Where potentially we could pave enough, or what did Jim think, twelve, sixteen pickleball courts we could put, put back there. The only people that are probably upset would be the deers and bunnies and, in the woods, no one would be able to hear it. And we could put Jersey barriers in for like six months outdoors, because we don't use it during that time because it's summertime. Uh, so that's something that Fidel has taken a look at, that, um, may be a huge asset for, um, the town for pickleball. So it's something, you know, it's quick, it's easy, it's cheap too, because you just put up Jersey barriers and make sure, um, it's there and you leave a, a box there for the portable nets and spray paint some lines and you're good to go. So, and Fidel, you want to jump in on that?
No, I didn't, I think you, you covered it, absolutely. It, it, it's very exciting and, and, and it's, um, I think if, uh, um, the select board and, and recreation are, 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 um, are getting a lot of complaints about, uh, Memorial Park, uh, a lot of complaints about, uh, the, the potential installation of Birch Meadow. At Sturgis, it was essentially killed. Um, and, and I think that, that, um, you know, it's a sport that is growing, uh, and having a solution that, that is not impacting, uh, uh, borders would be great.
Yeah, and, and it sounds like if it's as simple as, as paving, it can work as, I'm gonna call it a short-term solution, not upset the planning and the possibilities of what we could be doing because, I, I know, we have a ball field there too. My view with that is if it's better to move that to some other part of that land in order to, to open up access for a larger area, you can talk about it.
It takes the pressure off you guys for the ball complaints.
So Kyle was saying in the winter, we could still use that for the, for the locking.
Yeah, yeah, because essentially all your, you know, are gonna put up, you just put Jersey barriers, locking off so all cars would pull in there and that, take it to the second light pole.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be paved.
Right.
So let's say till October first and the town just moves the Jersey barriers out of there and we have a deep parking lot, just like we do now. So instead of being dirt, it's paved with pickleball lines on it. We don't line the court, we, we don't line that area anyways because it's dirt.
Very, very small cars with some of those lines.
So I, I appreciate that, I don't, I don't know if this was the first time you had heard about the other thoughts that the town is having, having about that area in general. And last night, the select board, we have a committee, the SWEC committee, and they expanded the charge so that they would keep it broad and look. We were just looking at some small portion of Simon's Way, but now we're looking at the whole area. And we would, you're smack in the middle of it and, and that's another reason to make sure that you were in full.
Great.
Is that area to the right of Range Road still in discussion, is where's the peak of the ball courts and the basketball courts?
Well, let me hear what I know, so no decisions made, but what, what we heard is that's only two and a half acres
It's a little idea, yeah.
and we don't know if it's clean enough to do anything.
Okay.
So that's kind of new information that this committee has been, that's their charge to figure out what we could do with that.
Different ideas, come back with some different ideas, I might, I might.
Yeah, priorities first.
And, and I know Nelson would look to buy it and the concerns of it potentially being dirty because, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, it's gotta be better, I know.
Something wrong with having, um, wellens to absorb water in this climate. Um, I need to, I need to bring up just one more item, um, that residents have, um, asked me about and again, transparency and finding out who the board members are and, um, concerns have been raised about questions being asked about whether the board members are Reading residents. And there is nothing that says, um, that they have to be Resident, Reading residents, but the land, the building, all of the equipment is owned by Reading. And it is, when we have committees in town and some committees via the state, we are only allowed to have Reading residents on them, especially a lot of these committees. A lot of them relate to money topics, so, um, some ways that we deal with that in other committees, we have, um, what do we call it? Well, we have non-voting members and they can take various forms by, I, I'm trying to think of, of how we phrase it. Associate members can be non-voting and there's a, Fidel is a member of our school building committee.
Ex officio?
Thank you. We can have ex officio members and then we bring in the expertise and we're gonna have Greg be an ex officio, maybe, member of our, um, school building committee so that we can make sure we have the right people in the room, but still kind of, you know, meet, meet people's concerns where this is a Reading, an asset for Reading people, have decisions be made by Reading residents. When does the committee meet?
Specifically, we meet four times a year.
No, no specific timeframe, but as needed, but four, four meetings minimum per year.
Who would be a good place to post a list of all the members, where would you think?
I'd throw it on your website.
Throw it just on our website?
Yeah.
And maybe the town calendar.
We can, that, oh, you can get it out to the website for you.
Tell it to me, absolutely, just tell it to me, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of. And just for to answer one of your questions in terms of Kathy's the only person that's, um, a former Reading resident, but she wasn't. In our bylaws, we have, we can still be able to do that. Brad Latham, our attorney, and at our last meeting, we actually voted that to keep her on there because she's a little qualified. Off of that.
I asked for meeting minutes and I asked for copy of the bylaws. I see what's been filed with the state and it doesn't say anything about membership in there and I don't have any meeting minutes. So that was kind of another question that I both requested. Do you have a secretary taking notes and meeting minutes and is there a current copy of your bylaws in addition to what's been filed with the state that could be published?
So you just, you haven't gotten that yourself or you wanted just to be published?
I've seen everything that's published online, it's, it's, the bylaws are very old, they're like typewritten.
And that, that isn't.
I haven't, so if you guys have a different copy of bylaws that you've added since then?
I don't know where, but you, you.
I mean.
You should, you gave me.
Carl, can you answer that?
I'm sorry.
Speak to that, the bylaws, Karen, was your question again?
If you guys worked on bylaws at your last meeting, is there a copy of the bylaws that I can send?
Yeah, Brad Latham is everything, I'll make sure Brad gets it over to you or Fidel.
Okay, and are you taking meeting minutes?
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's, it's taken recording.
You have to record it. Okay, cause I asked for that and I haven't been able to get it. But as a second liaison now, I would be intending on, um, and attending your meetings.
Excellent.
That's good to know, there are only four a year.
Yeah, if you don't, don't mind, because people at home may be interested what we're thinking of, um, pickleball. So obviously.
All right, let's be careful about open meeting law, which can, which agenda item does this fit under? Capital plans, would it be under the capital plan?
Next steps? Capital.
So if I have a capital plan.
Sure, I don't want us to fall on SWECK toes.
So what we're thinking of, this area, here, you can see that from this area forward is where senior league favorite, whatever you wanna call it, there's like ten cars a night at a game, a number of people there. We were talking about maybe just going to here, Jersey barrier, Jersey barrier, 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 barrier. In this area, Jim Sullivan, the rep director, said he could put on sixteen courts, pickleball courts there, put like a little shed right here for store of the nets, if they, like, when someone wants to use them, they would just put them together, there wouldn't be any permanent structure at all. So we just, Carl, pave this, Jersey barrier here, put, you know, lines down, um, pickleball away.
How would you separate the courts, like, you need fencing and? That, that one I'm gonna, is out of bounds for now. Can't do that one yet, we got a good starting point.
Nice picture.
Yeah. Fidel, actually, can you show one other picture, which is, what I was thinking of was, um, what the board voted on last night in terms of the
Oh, sure.
um, area that SWECK's gonna be, you know, um, looking at in total. And Marlena brought up the point, you know, we're not attempting to step on any toes and that's why I mentioned if there's a short-term solution that doesn't get in their way, that could be interesting to, to propose. But I think we definitely don't want to get in the way of what we just created. Yeah, there we go, okay. So bottom right is kind of what the Zani property was that the town purchased and where you see buildable are, are kind of additions that now are, are being considered. And you kind of see where the ball field is in the back, you know, clearly the burlap pools, or the burlap pools. But this committee now has a chance to look, you know, a bit more broadly at that area and explore different kinds of possibilities. So, thank you, I just, I.
So just town only land, is everything within the blue working?
So what's this right here, like inside the blue?
Inside the blue, the blue.
Uh, that is, uh, chapter ninety-seven lands, so it's wetlands essentially.
Conservation of.
Green as well, it's like.
Buildable is, so SWECK original charge plus buildable, plus conceivably baseball field are, are in scope?
I had the same question, because that blue line goes right through the ice arena, so there is another sliver of land. So that just happens to be a parcel outline, so the arena's sitting on actually a couple of parcels.
I thought that was a primary.
I do, yeah. Is there a conversation to expand the entrance to Simon's Way? Because right now it's two lanes and, and little treasures, okay, that's another, it's terrible.
Yes, I gotta rule that. I don't want to, sorry, not, not, not part here, yeah. Great question to bring up, to share with SWECK, SWECK if you're listening, not on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Great, so I guess, um, is it, is there anything else we want to talk about, about, um?
Well, is the D E I initiative just about the locker room that we already talked about? I just didn't know what else that was supposed to.
Well, okay, so, um, are you, what are you guys thinking about in terms of D E I initiatives? Like, uh, who, who makes up your board? Do you have broad representation of the community on the board? Do we have any adaptive programs? Do we have any members of the community that are, um, what's that, universal design? Any, any input, like, like those kind of things, what are you thinking of?
Well, in our bylaws, it's listed, like, for instance, the high school coach is supposed to be on the board, uh, Mark Darian. Uh, the president of Reading Youth Hockey has to be a member, Sean Collins has to be a member, the skate club. The skate club has to have a representative, like it's spelled out the select without.
Who's the skating club representative?
I'm sorry?
Is there a skater skating? Not, not a skating club representative, just a figure skating person.
I mean, it would be nice if, since North Shore is a meter client, it would be nice if somebody from North Shore was on here too. I don't know. If you only meet four times a year, why wouldn't somebody from North Shore wanna be on here? But anyway, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. Um, in terms of when the agreement was between Reading Ice Arena and the town thirty years ago. This was how they set up who should be on it. And that's the way it's always been. So, but.
I think I saw that somewhere.
Yeah.
There's a really old document that says bylaws. So my question is, is that what you're working off of? Is there a new revision?
Yeah, totally, maybe. You know what, maybe even easier because Brad Latham drew it up of having Brad maybe attend our next meeting because, you know.
Yeah, I think sharing it out to, but yeah.
That's, that's what, that's what he does, you know, char, you know, whatever. Yeah, I mean, we ask him a question, all of a sudden he starts giving us like more pieces on all of it.
Yeah, and I think, so is Brad actually on the board also? Because I know he's, he's been great in terms of giving his legal services.
Yeah.
Okay, so he's just kind of a, a good guy.
He did an agreement.
Crafted the lease.
Yeah, but he's.
He does, he pro bono, he does op-legal.
And he does legal work. The legal line is either not here or less.
Yeah.
Okay, do you wanna go to net zero?
Yeah, I, well, you're here.
We all wanna go to net zero, but let's talk about it.
Is there anything else?
I guess.
A couple of questions, so just kind of, as you guys were having discussions, kind of thinking in background over here. Did I understand that the roof has not yet been replaced? The roof has not yet been replaced.
Correct.
Yeah, it's not, it's still the existing roof.
So it's written all to, is it ninety-six, maybe two or ninety-four?
So the reason, the reason I ask the question is um, there might, I'll do a little bit of research, I'll take that as an action item. But there might be a mechanism where if we put solar on the roof and we actually replace the roof at the same time, there might be some additional tax credits. Now, this whole tax credit, this, this is, there's a, there's a, there's a whole bunch of new legislation in place. But there might be a mechanism that would allow for maybe thirty percent of the cost of the roof to be included in an I T C if we did solar at the same time.
Sorry, I T C?
Investment tax credit.
Thank you.
That's not a commitment, that's not a promise, but I'm just, I'm thinking there are other, there are other situations. So there'll be a couple of, this is a question, it's not a statement. You're gonna find me to think out of the box. This is an out of the box idea. However, the ownership of the building itself, because it goes into who gets the tax credit and R M L D, it's its own weird entity, all another topic. But there might be a mechanism if we actually own the asset and we replace roofs. I'm not trying to own the building, that's not my intention, but who owns the physical building?
Reading.
The town.
The town of Reading.
Towns.
So that might create some, there might be some, I'm just thinking out of the box here.
Yeah, yeah.
So there might be a, if the built, if the roof has not yet been done, we might, and I don't know the cost of the roof, if it's four hundred thousand or five hundred thousand, whatever. But there might be a potential for us to relook at the prioritization of the schedules, et cetera. And I don't know if it has to be replaced absolutely this summer, it can't wait another year. I don't know any of that detail. I'm just saying there might be another creative way to make some more dollars work.
Which is great. The only thing, I mean, this is no disrespect.
Oh, that's, I'm just thinking out of the box.
Is the fact that we can't wait months for someone to get back to us with a plan. Do you know what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying.
Okay, so, and I know.
Yeah, and this is, this is the new R M L D, just so you know.
No, I understand that, and as I said, but you know, just in terms of.
No problem.
Let, let's get whomever on your rent in a room with Ed and Joe Huggins, whomever.
Yep.
Have the, the staff, shall we say, to figure out something that's ideal for all three parties.
You're gonna find me to be very decisive, so we're not gonna waste a lot of time, trust me.
Well, that's, that's all I'm saying, because I think.
We're not going to.
I certainly, my impression from the board is let's get something done, right? From the solar aspect of it.
I know your roof is not getting any younger and I, you know, and I know you knew that as well, so definitely, so that's why I was great to get everyone here.
I didn't know that, but that was already done.
Yeah, can I ask one other question?
Yeah, and there's still a structural issue that we have to look at too, so we'll do it fairly quickly, we won't waste a lot of time.
So back to the structural issue. If it turns out that suddenly we have or haven't resolved that, but the roof requires action now. Are there specific requirements that you can lay out that could go to the contractor to be clear on the structural needs?
But, so you're asking, there's a very fundamental question mark, independent of what the roof looks like, of the membrane amount, I'm assuming it's a roof membrane. My apologies for not having visited the site. But if the, if the physical structure is not able to handle the load of solar, then the solar on the roof is irrelevant unless you wanna rebuild the building. And I'm just.
But we should know that. You gotta ask the question.
That was rhetorical.
I'm being blunt. No, I'm just, I'm just saying, look, seriously, what, I didn't think that this had, this is a small roof in reality, okay? And now I'm just, I'm understanding, forgive me, I'm just understanding a little more the context and we'll figure, we'll, we'll make some quick, you know. Is there some opportunity to put, the whole solar on the roof has a whole bunch of implications. It, it will benefit, so there's a whole element in terms of where those savings accrue and to which party. And we'll have to work through that, right? We, we can be a catalyst to help make that done and we as R M L D, as the electric utility, are motivated to put generation in the form of solar, whatever else creative things we can create, wherever we possibly can. So this could be a possible spot, that's one piece. You know, the lighting, we used to have a lighting rebate at the end of the, you know, we basically discontinued that two years ago because there was no longer a choice when you put new lighting in. The idea behind incentives is to cause people to do different behavior. Whatever lighting you have in, you have in. We have, I ran the analysis, you know, I didn't actually, Ryan ran the analysis, fairness. But it's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year in energy use, right? If you're to put a solar roof, and it depends upon how we do the solar piece and who pays for the solar. I mean, there's a whole bunch of different options, we can lay out a couple of options. We'll do the big picture, we'll do it quickly, we won't waste a lot of time. Project cost is about seven to eight hundred thousand dollars to put solar on this roof. Right, it'll, it'll, the, it won't pay back very quickly from your use perspective because our rates are so low. However, there might be a way that we do it, that, that R M L D leases, or licenses the roof. We're faced with a whole bunch of issues in terms of how we do all the tax stuff, so I'm being well coached from the financial side of the equation, right? We would license it. But there may, a couple of other different mechanisms that still make the building generate more income to all the participants. And we just happen to be a mechanism to risk to do that. All I'm saying is, and then, you know, there's a question, in fact, you have ice, creates a whole nother interesting element. Because there's another piece of the business going back to net zero where this goes back to our capacity and transmission savings. And ice is a great, so we have to make sure that there are limits in terms of how cold the ice have to be. I mean, again, I'm an engineer, natural engineer primarily, but we like cold storage and we like ice where we can help manage when, when the, when the chillers are basic, when the refrigeration, whatever you guys have for refrigeration is running and when it's not running. Because there are thirteen hours every year, one a month for transmission and one a year for capacity. Then if we reduce load and your, your load, your, your demand load is about two hundred K W. So anyways, there's a financial benefit and we're actually creating some new rates to make it more beneficial for whoever the load is. You know, in this particular case, you guys, because you pay the bill, that there'll be a coincident peak that creates some additional savings on your energy bill. So there's some creative different ways that we could make stuff happen. I'm just thinking out loud relative to, I didn't realize that the roof hadn't been replaced, my apologies, I thought that it was.
No, and that was really, that was just getting you, that's why, because I know it's a top priority.
Yeah, that's fine. And, and again, this might, it might not work. It's, it's, it's not a slam dunk like we should really do this, but we can, it might, given all of the other different economics, it might work. And we might, again, I'll have to have discussions, you know, Joe and Trudell, et cetera, in terms of prioritization. But I'm not gonna waste a lot of time because we got, we got a ton of stuff to do and we're, and we are doing it.
So can we cut?
There, there's no slow walking.
Let's cut right to the chase.
Yeah.
What do you need and how much time do you need so that you could come back with a bottom line and just say, here's what it would look like?
So what I, so two things. So we'll try and schedule an energy audit, that's gonna be, so realistic, and so that's gonna be a July event at the earliest. Just because that's so far out, right? Because everybody's on emergency audits, so, but I, I, I probably should sit down, I should probably meet with Joe at the site just to do a quick estimate in terms of, and whoever he has.
Joe Huggins.
Joe Huggins. And, and what do you guys have there?
It, it do, don't.
Ed, Ed, absolutely right, just, I'm just thinking of an entity. So the, the first critical criteria is can the roof support solar, right? And Ed and I are not gonna be able to finalize that, but we can do some quick estimates and talk to some of the people that we deal with to say, hey, yes or no. Like, is it absolutely no way or is it marginal or yeah, no problem, right? And so if it's in, if it's in the no problem, we keep running. If it's in the absolutely no way, we stop and we figure out how to do ice management and all that kind of stuff. So there's a bunch of different pieces. So, so entry to bottom line, you know, I will, Ryan, he does, you know, so we, we have added some additional resources to a very lean team. Ryan loves this stuff, so it won't, realistically, it'll be the, it'll be the second week of June realistically. No, June, June to go and visit the site. No, you're right, and just to, no, no, it's totally good. We're trying to prioritize where we spend dollars, just like all, all of us are, right? There's, there's no, there's no difference, right? We just, we deal electricity, you guys deal ice.
So in fact, during the peak of COVID and Ed was telling us the state actually reached out, the rink was gonna be an emergency board during COVID.
Yeah.
So we need to make sure our ice is cold.
Yeah. But there's a, there's a, there's a way to manage. And there's, again, we're trying to push the edge of the envelope on certain elements, but managing the energy efficiency portion. You know, I haven't looked at the load, but it's gonna be, I'm gonna guess seventy percent is gonna be ice, right? Lighting is gonna be, I'm gonna guess it's minimal, but that's a pretty straightforward calculation. So if you wanna manage energy costs, right, you manage how you manage the ice. And it's, there's, I'm not the expert on ice, but there's ways to manage ice where you get the, from a hockey perspective and a skating perspective, that you get the surface you want, yet we don't, we're more energy efficient. So there's gonna be opportunities there. And on that side of the equation, this is where it's the creative stuff, where maybe R M L D makes the capital investment to manage that. We collect the majority of the savings because again, you know, we're, we're not for profit, right? We're, you know, we, we operate in a very similar mode, but to create net benefit for the town, net benefit for the rink, and a net benefit for R M L D. There's some, these aren't big dollars, you know, I think.
So can, can I just question that for a sec?
Say what?
We, we need to make sure the magnitude of the opportunities here are worth our time.
Yeah, that's the, that's the other theme, we're talking.
And I'm, I'm hearing from you that it might not be, and maybe that's the first assessment.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, it's the right thing, because the total bill is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Right, so can you cut it in half?
No, you can't cut it in half. So.
Okay, can, can you take out ten percent?
Yeah, so that's the right question.
Really?
So that's, that's exactly the right question.
You realize they're firing up coal plants to make ice like thirteen days of, yeah.
Mark, right, but, but.
He's being, he's being realistic, right?
Mark has, he's asked a right question, it's dollars and cents.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go crazy to find five thousand dollars.
Of course not, of course not, and he's caveatting up to the yin yang, but it's a thirty-year-old system.
Yeah.
So. Yeah. Just one additional point is that, to best my knowledge, we're not allowed to take, like, take out a loan or anything. So we couldn't find, like, we couldn't go to Reading Cooperative Bank and borrow.
So that's why you're here talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm just making sure that you're aware. I know you guys are flush with cash, the ATM on Ash Street, right, that's what I've always promised you. And you go through, you go through your financials, your financials, it's, it's crazy, but what else?
Hey. You'd be in the kitchen area, right?
Well, and you have the most money in the area too. So what I'm saying too is the fact that we, just if that's a factor, that we would have, we don't have the ability to borrow the money.
But it's not.
Can you come back and you talk to the landlord?
So I understand that, that's, that's part of the criteria. So, so that's why, you know, thinking about a different business model is gonna, we have to be creative. Mark's question is right, what's the order of magnitude? This is, you know, this is not a big array, but you know, you know, maybe we move it into the prioritization because it, because it does need a new roof and doing a ray with a roof, again, there's a whole bunch of pieces here.
What about the parking lot? I don't know what the economics are on parking lot structures.
So, so, so they're much more expensive. So we at some point in time, four years from now, five years from now, we will, we will be pursuing opportunities to put solar canopies, solar canopies on parking lots.
Okay.
But that's down the road a little bit.
Okay.
We've got a, there's lower, there's less expensive opportunities in front of us right now that we need to pursue before we get to that.
Yeah, okay.
But eventually, yes, and it's not gonna be all over the place, but like, we'll, we'll have to be creative.
Side note, Stonemont has solar panels, so, and it's recent, so please, please see how, and, and they're not obviously in R M L D, all that, but um.
Yeah, yeah. Cool. Yeah, but, but Stonemont's in I O U territory and, oh, by the way, major three times, so they are, so the economics are very different from them.
Right. Yes, yeah. But the size of the building is similar and so I don't know.
But, yeah, so I'm not worried about the size.
Yeah, so can I, can I, can I say?
Okay, so you guys, just clear, so it, the building itself is owned by the town of Reading, but the operations is a five oh one C three.
Yeah, arena, sorry.
So just think of this as a big ten.
I think all the equipment's owned by the corporation, so all the zamponi and personal property and equipment, I think is all the corporation.
And refrigeration equipment for the.
Yeah, it's all the corporation, it's just only in the building.
And is it relatively new or does it need to be, like, where is it, is it near end of life?
No, Ed went out to.
And we'll, we'll look at it, just, I'm just, I'm trying, I'm thinking of options.
Yes. I don't.
So your question is actually right, you know, for five thousand dollars, I mean, not that we don't wanna help, but.
Have you ever looked, there's one in Theluth, that the rink is solar panel on the, on the roof as well as the canopies and parking lots, carports, they've got panels everywhere. Is that, is there any chance we could, do you have any contacts with those?
We can find out. I have contacts. Here, here's the bottom line. So when your energy rates are very high, making the investment to put solar in has a very short payback. Because you're replacing, you're, you're basically substituting very expensive energy. We in Reading have very inexpensive energy. So the payback period in terms of you as a customer putting solar panels on the roof, great example, right? Like, we literally pay for a third of, you know, the incentive program will pay for a third of the installation of solar on a roof in the residence, in the residential area. But the rates are so low, even with that, plus the federal tax credits, et cetera, it does, it's not persuasively economical for somebody to make that investment. What changed, so that's the reason why it's, we have to be more creative within an M L P, like Reading and R M L territory to figure out ways to do this. Because the cost, because the, the relative, the substitutionary cost is so low, it doesn't pay back. It's just a much longer payback period, so most people aren't willing to make the economic investment. Has changed in, in August of twenty twenty-two was the Inflation Reduction Act that allowed the M L P, Reading Municipal Light, again, a not-for-profit, not nonprofit, but a not-for-profit, to take advantage of tax credits in particular, investment tax credit and production tax credit that change the economics and, and make marginal or probably past projects, hey, we should do it. In addition, the other thing that we're trying to do is put as much generation within our territory from a reliability perspective. Because the regional network is inherently becoming more fragile. It's not, it's not supposed to be doom and gloom and, and make people nervous, it's just, hey, it's the natural way of it. And so we are trying to look down the road as the R M L D, responsibility to provide reliable, low-cost energy, non-carbon energy to our territory. These are the things that we're going to do. So it is not, back to your point, we would, if, I, I can't imagine, independent of your ability to borrow money or not borrow money, to economically be able to put solar on your roof. We however, we might, there might be an economic play to make it work, that also, by the way, gets a roof. I didn't know about the roof thing until today, so that's just an additive incentive to look at it.
Can I ask a silly question, because I'm just curious, this is fascinating to me.
No, it is.
What was told to us before, is the way, if you can put that picture back up on of Burbank, is that you can see it's, the trees are very tall, because it's like.
From a shady perspective?
And it was put out and like, the, the amount of time of direct sunlight onto the panels, exposure
Yeah, you know, exposure.
is, is not ideal. That's what we were told by your predecessor.
Yeah, my.
There's no shade.
I don't know if that's true or not.
Two twenty, it comes up to.
It's too shady, it's too shady.
There's no shade. Two twenty twenty.
I don't know.
Okay, I, I was just curious if that was a factor or not.
Oh, it, it absolutely is a factor and, and then, and then you goes into the, you know, so obviously if there's no sun on the panels, they don't generate electricity, so that's part of the equation, so yes. So the, the orientation of the roof, that roof happens to be relatively flat, which is good, you know, and so we don't have to worry about ridge line and so it gives us a lot more flexibility. I, again, my apologies, I've been out to the site, I look at that picture right there, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say, yes, it might still be. There's, and again, we are very respectful of trees and vegetation. Our goal is to make sure we provide a reliable network, so we trim back growth. This might, that might be a different scenario here. I don't know the answer to your question, but the issue is very relevant. The first question however is the structural ability, and back to Mark's, right, right around that is what's the order of magnitude in terms of, of, like, what are we talking about, how much money? So I've got, I've got dollars in terms of what the array would cost, but that's preliminary stuff.
Greg, who would pay for the structural evaluation study?
We'd probably do an informal one that. We'd probably do an informal one at, at, at no cost to any, you know, to basically one of the, we'll do an initial view, if it's, if it's clearly you can handle it, then, then when we get to doing the more detailed stuff, we'll have a formal engineering. If it's clearly there's no way in heck, then we won't, we'll stop there. If it's in the margin, then we'll probably have to have somebody come and take a look at it. So I don't, but the answer to your question, we will, if we get to that middle scenario, we'll come back and figure out how to do it and figure out a way that works for everybody. No, we are not flush with cash.
We wanna work with you as well.
So I'm gonna say.
No, we do.
We're coming up on seven thirty, I think we should kind of bring ourselves to a close here, but let me, let me suggest a couple of things. Great discussion on kind of strategic related issues and how we might be able to work together on some, some new initiatives. It sounds like the first one however, very much relates to the roof and its capability for different things and the fact that it's old and may need to be replaced. You know, I don't wanna be dramatic, but soon, let's just say. That needs to get addressed or, or that opportunity is gonna fly out the window, right? And one of the reasons for this meeting was to, to be able to sit down and talk a little bit, so it didn't fly away by itself, we just, you know, got to tether it a little bit, right? So I think we gotta deal with that as quickly as we can. If that's mid-June to have this informal structural look take place, you know, obviously A S A P, but not later than that, that would be great, it would be great to kind of come back and, and let us all know that that's kind of where we are, right? You know, yes, really interesting, no, forget about it, or unfortunate likely place, which is it's in the middle.
We'll put three bucks, yeah, three bucks.
And that's where the energy audit is gonna help as well.
Exactly.
Yeah, the energy audit's not gonna be, so, we'll, we'll get to the, no, and I say that, you're exactly right, but the scheduling, the energy audit.
So the audit.
You were talking July, is that what you think?
At the earliest, yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
But that's great, and then, then you'll know, it's a thirty year old building, you'll know, are we in good shape for, hmm?
Maybe somebody knows somebody who really says that this is a great opportunity for a pilot showcase activity and they ought to get going.
We will look at, if it's, if, if it's even practical, we will pursue that avenue.
Awesome.
In terms of, there's value to P R and when, when there's P R related stuff, other people like to be part of it.
Exactly.
And they bring value, and the value might be in the form of dollars, it might be in the form of services, it might be in the form of fast ability to get stuff done. So that's, that's, you're right, Mark, that's exactly how we look at it now, you know, how do you create value for everybody involved? If there's nothing here, okay, then we walk on, no disrespect.
So if you, if you, it turns out, come back with a green light, I'm gonna suggest Karen, Chris, the select board, Fidel, engage with our state legislators a little bit too, but let's see what, what level of interest they have.
And we're doing a lot of work on the legislation as well, so we'll, we'll make that a coordinated effort because we are pushing aggressively in terms of, I'll say, R M L D is very aggressive in terms of being innovative and trying to help accelerate this transition to non-carbon. And that's got a lot of, that's really helping.
And Jason Lewis is on energy, right, he's education and energy.
T A C.
D E, D U E.
D U E.
Yeah, so I think, I think he is, I think he may be able to spend some time with the new secretary and if it's gonna happen, let's make a big deal out of it, right?
We've got another project that's, that's doing a lot of work with legislator, maybe this one becomes a part of it.
Fidel has been a master in terms of working with our legislative team and bringing in money. Carl, how's the chair feeling?
Okay, let me just close on this for a second then, absolutely. So next, so I think that's kind of the, you know, that's one high priority piece. Second high priority piece we talked about is if you folks can, I know, Jim, you took great notes, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure that's not just groceries.
Nope, I like it, I want to read it.
If we can kind of take that to, to a next step and, and.
New guy.
Sorry.
New guy gives sense.
The new guy gets all the work.
New guy, yeah, 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 lesson learned tonight. To take that to the next step so that we can talk about sitting down again, you know, whether it's an in, a less formal setting of lots and lots of people or maybe it's better off as a smaller setting, maybe that's something we wanna talk about also, I'm not sure that, you know, the whole thing.
Do you wanna set a date now for that possibly, or a, a month at least? So that they can talk to their people, Greg can get it on his.
Yeah, I mean, so i- if we said latter part of June, does that make sense? Does that allow for everything, I mean, maybe not the audit, maybe the audit, enough time to think about these things.
I was just thinking it might be a good idea if we'd have the audit in hand by then to have the meeting right after we get to the audit.
We're not gonna, so if you wanna wait for an energy audit, schedule it in August. If you wanna get some preliminary notes in terms of what we may or may not to do, schedule it in the last second, third or fourth week of June.
Well, the most pressing issue is whether or not solar makes sense, right?
Exactly.
And you're gonna know by July first, so it could be something that is.
Yeah, we'll know by July first at last.
Yeah, let's go late June.
Yeah, I think you could just send an email to everyone, thumbs up or thumbs down, and then we can schedule a meeting right after that.
I'll coordinate through the, I don't have all this, all the emails here, but we'll, I'll get that done.
Great. So that, I think that drives kind of priorities one and two in some sense, in terms of what this meeting is about, right? Making sure that we're, we're talking about kind of what's specific here, talking about the capital relationship and R M L D and the, the most specific and pressing issue literally being the roof. Okay, then I think it sounds like there may be other opportunities to talk about in terms of H V A C and other things and maybe put that back into your court in terms of, what, what does that mean? It sounds like it's certainly the audit that has to take place, right?
Yeah.
And then thinking about what sort of things could happen, you know, when you said thirty percent, so my ears perked up, right? Right away.
Fifty grand.
So, you know, if there, there are some reasonable chunks here to think about, then I think that's awesome, I think those are great opportunities.
If you've gotta do the roof anyways, then.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, they gotta do the roof.
That, that changes the, again, I, I don't wanna speak for the town of Reading, but that could change how we prioritize, which ones we prioritize.
Great, I just think that's, that's, yeah, and, and hopefully we get a clear signal in June that lets us make that decision and not one of them.
Yeah, hopefully it'll be binary, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so let's see what we have to, okay, Chris, and then Marlena, sorry.
I just wanted to touch on, Carl had asked about the, the previous audit of, of why they didn't go with solar, et cetera. It's, in two thousand twenty-three, it's no longer, to a point, relevant because the efficiency of the panels and whatnot have gotten so much better since two thousand eighteen or whatever. That's the same reason, going back to me not doing solar, the panels that I would've got on my roof then, obviously there's new upgraded ones now, that makes it more advantageous for me to actually do it. So the same thing could be in this scenario where back then it wasn't worth it, but with the newer panels, it might be significantly more worth it. Plus, things are getting lighter, more efficient, so now the roof is gonna be a lot easier to handle compared to however it was back then. Every year that goes by, the technology just gets better and better, so it's, it's helpful to wait, but you know, can't wait till, whatever.
Marlena.
Um, in terms of how that whole property works, I now learned that the town owns the building, the land, but I'm curious about Nelson's gift, where it begins and ends. What Nelson gifted, what exactly, and how is that still part of the big picture when we talked about Burbank?
So I, I'll clarify that, that I'm, I'm not sure if the town owns the building, the, the, uh, uh, the town certainly owns the land, that's, that's without a doubt. The, um, there is a, a thirty year lease on, on the, on the property with twenty years remaining. Working off of memory, I, I.
It's in the lease, it's the bill that says building in the lease.
To, to be transferred at the end of the lease, if, if, if that is, if that's at the.
No, it says the town agrees to lease to the tenant, certain parcel of land of four point five acres and ice skating rink building located at the Nelson as Burbank Ice Arena, but also to side of your question, anything attached to the property stays with the property. So you can take the Zamboni with you when you leave. But this is all in the lease, it's type right, it hasn't changed in thirty years.
The financial statements sort of bear that out too because they only have equipment, machinery, leasehold improvements, they don't have land and building as assets of the corporation, so they have to build by the land, by the town.
That ownership is gonna be an important issue.
Wasn't it initial, initially a gift?
In terms of we can, can't do it, tax wise. They donated three.
Okay. But two, but he stipulated what the gift was for.
I think he's, yeah, just one way.
Yeah.
And he guaranteed like the debt on it, I think.
And how?
A million dollars he put up for.
He got his name on it though.
I don't know.
And then.
Our internal grateful, gratefulness.
And then, and that it would be run as a not for profit?
Correct.
All right.
I think the town would just perpetually continue to own it.
Makes sense.
They owns the, own the building and the lease runs out, so they'd either do a new lease with Reading Ice Arena Authority or whoever else at that point, twenty years from now or whatever that is.
I've heard about automatic renewal.
But it was, the owner, the ownership would stay with the town, I'm pretty sure, real estate and the building.
Correct.
All right.
So literally, you know, twenty, twenty years by contract, right, and then potentially well beyond.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Town Manager, because it does say in here that the town does the plowing, but it's been thirty years. Is the town doing the plowing, are you guys doing the plowing of Simon's Way?
I'm not sure about that, we, I mean, I know we do our parking lot, assuming, because Simon's Way is a public road, I would assume you guys know that part of it.
Do you? Okay.
It does.
It does the parking lot, so do the road too?
Not the road, it don't, it's.
Right, the, the, Simon's Way, but our parking lot, he does the plowing of that.
Makes sense, okay, no worries.
Anyone with a last comment?
Nope, thank you all.
Thank you for coming in, really appreciate it, thanks you folks, R M L D for coming in, thank you. Great, and we'll talk about late June, what we should do as well.
I was like, motion to adjourn.
You can't do it though.
We can't do it.
Motion to adjourn.
It's our second, thank you, all those in favor? So select board, three zero, adjourned.
Yes.
Where adjourn?
Move to adjourn. I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Did you take a little favor?
Yep, and Jim, can you just bang that gavel once, please?